The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on January 25.
So moved.
Any discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, special reports.
Yes, I had asked Lacy to come tonight to give us an update on the library, particularly what it's been like for her first 90 days. And you did that in that podium there.
Yeah, so since I've been here about three and a half months now, which I kind of can't believe, I wanted to do a little bit of a 90-day reflection for you. What has happened so far this year and where do I see the library going in the future? So you should have a copy of the library's annual report and you can look at that on your own time, but I just wanted to go through some highlights. So this year for the annual report, we chose to focus on how the library was essential to the community this year, using four categories: education, e-learning, exploration, and engagement. And even though the building was close to the public for about 20 weeks this year, the library was still able to do a lot of really amazing things. More than 50,000 people attended library programs this year, and 90% of that attendance comes from virtual programs. And the other 10% was from before the library closed, back in January and February. And those programming numbers don't include the 1.5 million people worldwide that attended Sydney's Harry Potter escape room this year, which went viral.
Do you want to say who Sydney was, maybe the people watching?
Sure, yeah. Sydney is a youth services assistant at the library, and she created a virtual Harry Potter-themed digital escape room. And so it kind of went viral and trended worldwide. And so far, a million and a half people have completed it, which is pretty cool.
Quite an accomplishment.
Definitely.
That's a lot of people in our library.
Yeah. So when we were, when the building was close to the public, we were still offering curbside service, and it's been extremely busy, sometimes to the point that we need three or four staff members downstairs helping with the curbside service. And we're not just handing out books and movies, but book bundles, program kits, tax forms, Home for the Holidays baskets, take-and-make Monday bags, pretty much anything you can imagine. So, you know, although the building was close to the public for a good portion of the year, we were still offering a lot of the same services, just they looked a little bit different. They were in a different format. So since I was kind of an outsider coming in, I wanted to highlight a few of the library's strengths that I've noticed in the past couple months that I've been there. First, the library is super highly valued in the community, and our patrons are very enthusiastic about the library, and they really recognize the valuable asset that we are to the community, which is really impressive. And the library has a very great team environment. Every employee is always willing to pick up extra shifts or help out with additional projects or tasks, whatever the case may be, so that makes it really easy for me as a director. And the library was able to make a quick pivot to virtual programming back in the spring, and that was made successful because of the high-quality marketing that we have and our strong newsletter following. And the library's virtual programming has only grown since the spring, and to the point that we needed to upgrade our Zoom subscription recently to accommodate more participants for some really high-demand adult programs that we have. We had a Civil War program last month that had about 180 people attend virtually. And next month, we'll be hosting the Army War College for the 15th year in a row, and we're expecting several hundred participants for that as well. And then finally, where do I want the library to go in the future? So there's just four areas that I'd like to focus on. First, I want to focus on creating written documentation, so things like operating policies, patron behavioral policies, handbooks for like the circulation desk, the reference desk, youth services department. And I would also like to work with the board on creating a three-year strategic plan, just to help guide the library. Second, I would like to work on evaluating the programming that we currently have in place to make sure it's the best that we can be offering to the community, as well as continuing to expand programming and come up with new ideas, especially programs for adults, which I think is an area we're missing out a little bit right now, which will hopefully be addressed by adding the full-time program coordinator position this spring. Next, I want to continue to make sure our collection of materials is the best in the area, so working on projects like weeding, streamlining some collections, reorganizing, taking a full collection inventory, things like that. And last, I would like to focus on fostering collaboration with local organizations and nonprofits, the Chamber of Commerce, small businesses, other libraries in the area. I think those partnerships and collaborations can be really, really valuable. So last, I just wanted to provide an update that right now we are tentatively thinking of reopening the library on Monday, March 1st. So that would be three weeks from today. We're going to need to take a little bit of time to transition back from curbside because we have just sprawled everywhere in the library without the public being there. This plan is in line with the libraries in Cannonsburg and Washington. They're both tentatively thinking the first week of March as well. And we're thinking of doing a phased reopening, so to start with, we would probably only open for browsing the stacks, have people come in, pick out their stuff and go, no computers, no tables, you know, not encouraging people to linger within the library right now.
Could I ask you about that before you go to your next thing?
Sure.
So you're modeling it after Washington County libraries, because apparently there are other libraries that are open now, full service?
Right.
So is it just that you want to be consistent in the wagon system, or?
It's not, unfortunately, it's not even really consistency within the wagon system because some of the libraries within Washington County are open already. But most of those libraries are very small, and they don't see the kind of foot traffic that Peters Township or Citizens or Frank Seras would see. So they feel more comfortable being open, full service, because they just don't see as many people. So for the larger libraries, and this is different everywhere because it's different right across the border in Allegheny County, you know, we haven't felt comfortable opening up until now. And unfortunately, the Office of Commonwealth Libraries is just kind of saying, you do what you feel that you need to do on an individual basis within your community, and just your priority should be to keep our employees safe. So that's what we're trying to do.
And the reason I'm asking, I would hope that we can try to escalate as much as possible to a more full open. I mean, there are a lot of people who rely on the computer use, printing, you know, things of that nature, so.
Yeah, so actually, just last week, we sent out a quick survey to our newsletter followers, and just in like two or three days, we had more than 600 people respond. 90% of them said they just wanted to come in and browse, and I think it was like 7% that said they wanted to come in and use the computers, which is not a great study because the people that can't use the computers can't answer. But we'll see how it goes. We'll see how it goes from there. And of course, people can still come in and use the copy services, or they can get, you know, things printed from the reference desk, things like that. But as far as the computers, when I talk to the reference staff, it's really hard for them to be socially distanced because people always need help on the computers, and it's very hard to do that right now. And so they kind of just prefer that maybe we don't offer that at all right now, until, you know, maybe another couple weeks in. So we're thinking about it, just in phases. That was pretty much all I have, so do any of you?
The one thing that we've been able to do since the library has not been open to the public is to do some work inside the library. The Public Works Department's been involved in painting the library, both the first and second floor, and that work is nearing completion. And, you know, once again, this is a situation where wintertime work for the Public Works Department's always a challenge. The other thing is it provides us an opportunity to put together a crew that reports to the library and provide some separation of library employees, so to deal with the situation with regard to COVID. So, you know, from that perspective, I think that's worked out well. What's going to be occurring shortly is we're in the process of getting prices to redo some of the carpeting on the first floor and finish the first floor up. So that's another project that will be occurring. And of course, we just recently changed the doors in the library so that there are no touch systems, so.
Yeah, not that anybody's been able to use them yet, except staff, but that's okay. We're ready. So does anybody have any other questions about what's going on at the library, or?
I'm sorry, but I do.
Sure.
I have a comment too, so please go.
I had a question about your programming.
Sure.
Related to the take-and-make and the different specialty baskets. First of all, I do get your newsletters, so I see the notices come out, and you did a holiday one, and you just did a offer to Valentine, and then weekly you do things. But I have to tell you, the response seems completely over the top. Like, you know, you put it up, and like two hours later, stock, we can't give out anymore. How do you, how are you managing that? And I presume it seems mostly the children's library and people who are doing it. Talk a little bit about that, how it's being managed, and maybe how we can make sure that, you know, everyone gets a chance.
Yeah, so the original Home for the Holidays baskets that we did over Christmas was Sydney's idea, again, our youth services assistant. And I honestly can't remember what we put the cap on for those baskets, but I want to say we had at least 50 of them go out. And so it's really just, you know, based on what kind of supplies we have on hand, what kind of money do we want to spend on that project. And then for the Valentine's Day baskets that we just did, we, I think, put the cap at 25 and had about 40 people respond right away, once the newsletter went out. So if people don't come to pick up their baskets within a certain timeframe, then it moves to the next person on the waitlist from people who had registered originally. I would be open to suggestions for how we could open that up to other people in the community besides the people that happen to see the newsletter and sign up for it in a split second.
Well, that's one of the things I was thinking, because, you know, some people weren't always sitting there on their computer.
Right, and we had that problem as well with some of the adult programs on Zoom, which is why we ended up upgrading our Zoom subscription, because the 100 people limit on our Zoom programs would fill up right away after the newsletter went out, which is why we actually upgraded to a 500-person subscription now. So we do recognize that that can have some issues, and so we're trying to work on in some areas, but as far as the baskets, I'm not really sure.
Maybe you could just ask people that if you've been able to participate in the last one or two, if you could wait till the next one, just to ask some other people. I just, you're doing a great job, it's so popular.
Well, it's a good problem to have.
It's a good problem, you're right.
Yeah, exactly.
I did have a question. Can you update us on where you are with staffing? I know we have just approved job descriptions. You also have some of the IT position. How are you doing?
Yep, so actually tomorrow morning, we are interviewing four people from the second round of, you know, after we reposted for the IT Reference Library, and we feel really good about all four of those candidates, and I'm excited to do the interviews tomorrow. As far as the two job descriptions that were just approved, the people that we had in mind internally have filled out the township job application and resumes and turned those in, so we're kind of on the next step there.
And one last question. Any update on the foundation, because I know they're in the process of reforming?
Yes, so they are still currently working on getting their bylaws updated. They're being reviewed by the township's attorney right now. But actually, we just finished conducting interviews last week, and so they added five new members to the foundation. And they are meeting on Friday morning is their next board meeting to kind of vote, to bring the new members in. And so we're very excited about those new members.
Well, I understand you were instrumental in writing the, helping write the bylaws, so thank you for coming in.
Yeah, no problem. Well, I had had, you know, some experience with that in past jobs, and it's easy enough to Google and find examples, so.
But once they do identify them, it might be nice if we can, if council hears who's involved and.
Yeah, yeah, we'll definitely do that after they, like I said, planning to vote them in on Friday morning, so.
Perfect, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lowes, you have a question?
Not a question. I wanted to compliment Lacy, you, the staff, and the library board for their annual report. I enjoyed reading it.
Thank you.
And I'm going to ask Paul, are we circulating that to the public, or would we be able to do that?
All of the annual reports from all the departments will be posted on the website and be available for people to see. So you'll be receiving the remaining department head reports at the next meeting, so.
And you set a significant bar for the balance of these reports to get measured against. Thank you.
I appreciate that. We are actually going to get them, about 500 of our annual reports printed, and we're going to mail them out to donors to the foundation from the past two years, just so the donors to the library can, you know, see everything that we've had going on and hopefully continue to support us.
Good idea.
So that's going to be our project for next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you so much for having me, guys, I appreciate it.
Okay, as usual, our audience comments are non-live because of the COVID restrictions. They've been, a number of them have been mailed in. Mr. Lowers, would you like to comment on them?
Sure, I have three audience comments I would like to read tonight. The first is from Timothy Shannon, and it reads, "Aquatic Center, do we really need it? Can we just stop spending money on nice-to-haves and focus our funds on must-needs? And is there any way to tax or hand out fees to companies that require easements or right-aways as a source of adding to the township's bank accounts? Also, is there any way to get a tour of the $110 million high school? I would love to see all the gold and silver-lined hallways that place must have. I'm betting it looks like something out of The Wizard of Oz." The second is from Pat in Blaze-Hollick, who live at 223 Trinity Drive. "My wife and I question the fiscal prudence of committing more funds towards building the aquatic center at this time. We feel that there are more pressing township concerns which need to be addressed before we taking on debt and legacy costs with this project. There are aquatic options available now: Club Pools, Rose Garden, Woodland Hills, Valley Brook, Goldfish, Upper St. Clair Recreation Center, South Park Wave. For those who desire to access swimming facilities, homeowner pools do provide private recreational opportunities to those financially able. Given these opportunities, you question adequate township family participation to financially sustain operations without additional tax burden on elder residents, especially now given the COVID presence and its unforeseen impacts. This is not the time for us to commit funds towards a facility that is only used several months a year." And the last one is from William and Lucy Shope at 102 Pine Oak Court. "In Peters Township expenditures have exceeded revenues each year since 2016. The budget for 2021 shows a deficit of $13,334,703. In addition, the data shows an annual decline in revenues each year since 2016 and a projected decline in 2021 by approximately $2 million. How is this trend sustainable without continual increase in taxes, which is an added burden on many residents? The agenda for the February 8, 2021 council meeting mentions prequalifications of general contractors for the Aquatic Center project. It is our understanding that council has not approved the Aquatic Center project, and seeking prequalification of contractors would be premature. Please explain the wisdom of proceeding in any manner on an exorbitant recreational capital expense under current and anticipated township financial deficits, anticipated funding of a central, pressing community needs, and a national pandemic." I don't know if there's any other.
Paul, I'd like you to comment on at least this last letter about, just to clarify, because, you know, I know that the 2021 budget does show a deficit, but doesn't that involve something?
Yeah, well, the reason why.
A loan and all that?
Yeah, I was going to say, the reason why the expenditures exceed the, what's available in terms of funds is that the township borrowed approximately $10 million in a bond issue. We're now in the process of undertaking the project for which the bulk of that money was borrowed. So this year, we are taking under construction Phase 1 of the Rolling Hills Park project, which means that we will be spending down those bonds money. So if you want to look at it as that somehow that's creating a deficit spending, I guess you could look at it that way, but I don't, I don't think that's the way anybody would perceive that to be.
Well, I think that a lot of people understand the bond concept, but they also understand that bonds have to be, there are fees associated with them, and they have to be paid. So I think that people understand that right now, we might have already borrowed money, but we are continuing to pay money off. So, you know, to the point that, you know, we've already borrowed that for a project that we're working on makes sense, absolutely. But, you know, to go forward, we're discussing another bond issue, so again, that will create another indebtedness.
Oh, and that's absolutely correct, Mrs. Merrill, and that's always been my point, is that if we move, we have moved ahead with Phase 1 of the park project, including some additional funds for the acquisition of the land for the fire station, as well as a fire truck. And there will, even if we do not move ahead with the aquatic center, I believe there will be required a small tax increase at the end of the year to be able to pay that debt service. If in fact we move ahead with the aquatic center, we will have to borrow funds to do that, and we will have to fund those, that debt service. And again, that will result in a small increase in the property tax rate, so.
Could you comment on, it says that, according to this email, it says that the revenues are projected to decline in 2021 by approximately $2 million.
I don't believe that to be correct.
I mean, I thought Ryan did an analysis, and weren't we like actually pretty good where we were? I thought we were a little bit ahead.
Yeah, we do budget conservatively, so there's always going to be, the revenues that are budgeted will always reflect a lower amount than what is collected from the prior year, because you're budgeting on a much more conservative basis.
But if you looked at what happened at the end, if you, and you'll see this at the next meeting, if you look at 2020, and this certainly was a period where everybody thought that the revenue structures of local government would be challenged, the fact of the matter is that is not what turned out to happen in the case of Peters Township. And particularly as a result of the CARES funds that were made available to the township through Washington County, 2020, the township was whole. So, you know, we did not, we did not suffer financially as a result of that.
Well, you can actually say we were further ahead than whole because we purchased significant elements that we would not have planned for or budgeted other than for the COVID money.
We, yeah, in part, you had two things within those CARES funds. You had about $300,000 that was given to the township to offset salaries for police and fire that we would have, we would have budgeted for anyhow. But then in addition to that, there were funds were made available for COVID-eligible projects that we would have taken on anyhow, either in 2020 or 2021. And so in doing so, it relieved our local burden to be able to fund those projects. So, you know, from that perspective, I think we were able to accomplish some things that would have otherwise taken local tax dollars.
If I could make another positive comment about Mr. Kierowski's financial reporting, he's done a really good job of explaining to us, as you said, where the revenues are potentially going to be good or bad. And the irony of how some things that we never thought were going to be good are better than things we expected to be good, and they aren't.
Yes.
So I think one of the things that he demonstrated by giving us all the detail is that there are some anomalies, as far as it's not as consistent in certain areas as we had thought. So there is a little bit of skepticism about what's going to happen. And, you know, we don't know if there'll be another recurrence, you know, even with the vaccines and all the rest of that, so, you know, being cautious is important.
Yes.
But every, every year, we generally beat the projected revenues.
The spread?
It's because we do budget conservatively. So, you know, it's, you can't just, you can't go back and look at the projected revenues and say, oh gee, we're, every year we forecast a deficit, because it doesn't always turn out that way. Well, that's recognized by the fact that we haven't raised mileage once. I think we raised it once, and then cut it back the next year for, since like, what, the late 80s or something like that? Mr. Lowers?
I don't know what that date is, but it's been a while.
That's what I thought, so.
The school board is making up for us.
And I think that you should, you should probably respond to some of these people, like this thing about getting a tour of the high school. We don't have anything to do with it.
No, we don't have anything to do with it, but I will tell you.
That's the school board, but, you know, I think sometimes people think it's us.
Yeah.
But the truth of the matter is, Mr. Curry, both the school board and us are in the taxpayers' pockets. So the taxpayers, you know, they just know that they're being pickpocketed.
I don't think we're as far in the taxpayers' pocket as the school does.
No, but I think the taxpayers have a, you know, have an interest in what's going on. And I think, you know, the school board might be well advised to set up kind of a program to show the taxpayers what their money's buying.
Oh, and I think it's.
That's their priority.
Yeah, I think they're very proud of that project. I think they're anxious to be able to do that. They just want to be able to do it when they can do it safely.
Why can't they videotape it?
That's exactly, that would be exactly a good idea.
They have the whole, we have, they have the whole video, you know, department that we sort of support. I mean, why couldn't they just video that and put it online?
A tour of the high school, that sounds good.
I will see what we can do.
Okay. For audience comments, anything else? The unfinished business, there is a new business authorization for appropriate township officials to execute a memorandum of understanding for the, for use of a portion of the Peters Township Community Recreation Center as a COVID-19 vaccination site by the Washington Health System.
So as we have discussed with council previously, we have made arrangements to partner with the Washington Health System to host a COVID-19 vaccine site at the Peters Township Community Recreation Center. As a result of that, they will be occupying one of the, one of the basketball courts, half of the gym space there. They have requested that we enter into a memorandum of understanding with them. What was in your docket was a draft. This was shipped to, to Mr. Smith for his review. It's been amended slightly. The township will not be indemnifying the hospital, but the hospital will be indemnifying township.
That was going to be my first question.
Yeah, and so that, that has been changed. The other thing that we have requested and they have provided is a copy of their insurance certificate naming the township as an additional insured. But beyond that, I think this under, this memorandum of understanding is pretty straightforward. The one thing that I would note is that when they posted on their website the opportunity to register, they were overwhelmed. And the Washington Hospital sees its mission to provide healthcare services to Washington County and Green County. And so in the four sites that they will be vaccinating, they will only be vaccinating residents from Washington County and from Green County. So, you know, from that perspective, I think the opportunity for someone in Peters Township who's in that 1A class may slightly improve, so.
Can I ask one other question? You answered the indemnification. You talked about them doing this six days a week for 10 hours a day, but that's not really stated in this memorandum. Do we, is that all right?
I don't think we need to get down into the weeds with them because quite frankly, I think their intention is to see how this works and adjust accordingly. You know, initially, what their intention is, is to start out with 300 vaccinations a day. And what they're hoping to be able to do is ramp up from that based upon learning and also based upon availability of vaccines. So, you know, our hope is that they're doing considerably more and whether they can do that in a, in a smaller timeframe or a greater timeframe is something we just want to work with them on.
It said on the website, if I'm not mistaken, or maybe I read it in the OR, that there's like, they need like 80,000 vaccines for Washington County and another 10,000 for Green. And then I think I read something that their allotment, whatever their most recent allotment was, was only several thousand.
Yes.
So, I mean, I would assume to give 300 a day, they, they have to make sure that, you know, they're getting at least that every, you know, every week.
Well, that explains the duration, the 10-month duration.
Yeah, I think it's going to take, well, hopefully it won't, but I, you know.
They, I think they've changed, as I read somewhere, they changed their philosophy that they were going to release all of what they had to first dose and then hopefully, you know, they're going to plan on getting the rest of it for the second dose rather than holding on to it.
I just don't understand what the problem is in Pennsylvania.
State of Pennsylvania.
My neighbor has been in Florida with her daughter for, I don't know, she's been gone a couple of months easy, and she just came back. And I asked her, I said, did you get vaccinated? And she said, oh, yeah. She said, they have a website now, like a statewide website. She said, I registered it. She goes, within a week, she got her shot.
Yeah.
And I mean, you know, there's people here that, you know, really need it and.
They're frustrated for sure.
Yeah.
There's a lot of frustration, but it's, I think that, that there are apparently now some, some mass inoculation sites being put up. And I have a feeling that it'll start to, you know, start to loosen up.
Yeah, but it's still strange to me that one of the largest vaccination clinics is the one that the township did with Hilltop Pharmacy still in western Pennsylvania. And as best I can tell, we are the only municipality that has partnered with a health system for the purposes of trying to facilitate their residents receiving vaccines.
One last question, sir. So this is not an exclusive. So for example, if one of the pharmacies who are apparently also starting to get vaccination materials would want to partner and perhaps use the library or our community center before the police take over, we could, we could partner with someone else.
Oh, and we're, yes, and we are again engaged with Hilltop Pharmacy to find out whether or not they want to do that type of mass vaccination again.
Do you accept the motion?
So moved.
I had a couple of questions. One, in the papers that I read, it seemed as if the Washington Health Group was limiting the distribution to members of their Washington Health System.
No.
That's certainly what I read, but.
No, no, they're limited to residents of Washington and Green Counties who are in the 1A category. And the thing that I would encourage anybody who's listening to pay attention to is, we are simply landlords. We don't control who gets a vaccine. So we haven't gotten a lot, but we've gotten a few calls into the building, you know, asking to be able to register and that's not our role in this partnership, so.
And the other question I'd have is another vacant property that could be something that would be of a size that would make sense was the remainder of the Kmart. I don't know whether there's access points and doors that would accommodate considering that.
I don't know. I think.
I thought Mr. Zup might.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think what will happen in terms of the township, if we move on from this, it will be in the summertime and the middle school will be vacant at that point in time.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we authorize the appropriate township officials to execute a memorandum of understanding for use of a portion of the Peters Township Community Recreation Center as a COVID-19 vaccination site by the Washington Health System.
Discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item is approval of a temporary easement across Township on property for the purpose of facilitating the proposed Columbia Gas maintenance project.
Can you, Ryan, can you take it then next? So Columbia Gas has a project slated for this year to replace gas lines off of the Circle Drive and the, and the roads that are behind there. The reason why they are interested in talking with us is that at the end of Rutledge Drive, they have two regulators. Those regulators are located within their easement, but they're situated in such a way that they can't get to them unless they get access across our property. So they're not asking to store anything on our property. What they are asking for is a construction easement where they can bring equipment across it. It's temporary in nature. This is a project that although these gas replacement line projects are very disruptive, they're also very needed. And I think we should do what we can to cooperate with them. So what is proposed tonight is that council authorize a temporary easement across our property to facilitate Columbia Gas's maintenance project.
I'll make a motion that we approve the temporary easement permitting the equipment to traverse Township on property to facilitate the replacement or installation of this pipeline subject to the restrictions that I guess are set forth in the manager's report about times and dates and things like that.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion in favor?
Just a quick question, the indemnification, we don't need anything more from them.
No, I don't think so.
Thank you.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Resolution authorizing the destruction of records in accordance with the Pennsylvania Municipal Records Manual as issued by the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission.
This is an annual exercise to destroy records that are no longer of value to the township. It's all done in accordance with state law. It's my recommendation that the council adopt resolution 020121 for the purposes of destroying records.
So moved. Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All righty. Set a date for a public hearing on proposed change to permitted uses in West Venetia Mixed Juice Corridor zoning district.
So before we start, I just wanted to share this with you because I don't know if you've had a chance to be down on Venetia Road. This is the new post office that has been constructed down there.
Wow.
And, and, you know, this building has turned out well and, and quite honestly, we don't design buildings, but we do help people in terms of citing buildings. And the way this building has been cited on this property, I think, is a large, in large part is in response to comments that came out of the, the planning department. And I think Mr. Zook should be commended on, on being able to get up this building in there in a way that is attractive. On the back end of the property that slopes down are a series of storefronts. And what is being asked by the property owner is that we consider amending our zoning ordinance to provide for personal services as a use. And, you know, Ed and I were talking about this and quite frankly, I think this is very appropriate for this area. It sits right across from residential areas. And so things like, like barber shops and beauty shops and dry cleaners and shoe repairs and things like that would be a perfect use, given the neighborhood nature of this. So the process by which this would occur requires that there be a, a public hearing. We're suggesting that that public hearing be set for the second meeting in March.
So moved.
Question? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution amending the Peters Township Act 537 sewage facility plan to provide access to sewage services for Carmichael subdivision plan lots.
So these next two agenda items are related. This, the Carmichael subdivision is, as you see here, is a large piece of property that is being subdivided into two large lots. One of them's over six acres, one of them's over four acres. What is a little bit unique here is that sewage to this site, I think, would normally have gone to the Peters Township Sanitary Authority, but it sits close to the edge of the, of the break in the watersheds. And both Peters Township Sanitary Authority, the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority believes the best way to be able to accommodate sewage to this site is to be able to let it drain to the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority. And because it's going to the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority, it would take an amendment to our Act 537 plan. That document is included inside of your docket and has been reviewed by all of the parties that are, have an interest in this. And it's going to be my recommendation that council adopt resolution 020221, amending the Peters Township Act 537 plan to provide access to, to sewage services for the Carmichael subdivision plan lots.
So moved.
Second.
Question? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So the second act.
Both lots going to go into the same Peters Creek?
Just one.
Yes.
The new lot.
The new lot, the lot one.
Yeah, this one has.
Because he said the plan, and I just wanted to make sure. It's just the one lot.
Yeah, because this one has an on, on, on lot septic system.
Wow, okay.
So the, the second thing that is needed is approval for recording purposes of the subdivision as shown on the drawings from Keystone survey. There are, there were six conditions. Two of those have already been met. The remaining two are approval by the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority and also approval of the, the sewage facility planning modules by DEPs.
Moved, we approve the Carmichael subdivision subject to the fulfillment of the pending conditions.
Second. Discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Discussion concerning the Rolling Hills Park project and proposed aquatic facility.
I guess I wanted to take some time tonight to bring everybody up to speed with regard to what's happening at the Rolling Hills Park. The Washington Conservation District has approved our NPDS permit for the Rolling Hills Park project. And as anticipated, the approval required modifications of the erosion control plan as prepared and submitted by MAC and engineers. Liberoni, the contractor of the project, is currently reviewing those modifications and we anticipate those required modifications will result in a change order. Despite the change order, Mr. Zomitis and I believe that the township's interests were served by proceeding with a contract award prior to the approval by the Conservation District. By moving forward as, as we did, the chances of completing the grading and paving associated with the project during this construction season are greatly enhanced. Mr. Zomitis, last Friday, had a pre-construction meeting on the site with the Washington County Conservation District and representative from Liberoni to discuss the Phase One project. And if you were to drive up Rolling Hills Drive, you will see that Liberoni has begun earthwork on that site as of last week. So again, the, this project consists of, although this road's slightly configured slightly different at this point, consists of this road, the great lawn area, the restroom area, these terminal features on the, on the great lawn, as well as the maintenance building which will be located down in this area now. We have a meeting with the Conservation District and Paul Hughes of Kimbley Horn, the civil engineer for the Aquatic Center project, to begin discussion on the NPDS permit that would be needed for the Aquatic Center. That meeting's going to occur this Thursday and our hope is that by the middle of the month, we'll be in a position to make formal application for, for that permit. The design consultants for the Rolling Hills Aquatic Center have nearly completed the site plan for the Aquatic Center. The, and, you know, and this locates in dimensions, parking lots, building pads, and the pool deck. Based upon the site plan, a grading plan for the project has been developed. To give you some idea of, and again, I think this is probably very close to the configuration for the proposed Aquatic Center at this point. It still may have some minor modifications, but I think they, those in fact will be minor in nature. These are some renderings of what some of the areas would look like. This is the spray park. You know, one of the things in this design that we attempted to do was to try to extend the season for the Aquatic Center by creating elements that could be opened in the beginning of May and stay open through the, the month of September and the spray park is one of those elements. This is a close up of the one element that's in that spray park. This is a rendering of the, of the children's pool. As you can see, it's intended to be a very shallow depth area. One of the things that we're actually thinking about is if you look at the configuration of the, of the, of the Aquatic Center, the, this spray park and this children's pool are close in proximity. There's a break that occurs here that's actually two steps down and which, and also fencing that will be allowed this, this area to be separated from this. And we're going to be having discussions with whether or not when the spray park opens in, in early May, whether it might make sense to actually even open up this small area. Because quite frankly, if it's not warm enough to be in the spray park, it probably isn't warm enough to be in the pool, but the reverse is true as well. This is a rendering of what the slides are as they're depicted. This one slide will be bid as an alternate. If you go back, the intention is, is that this slide runs out into, does not run into a pool, but runs out into a wet area that slows down. The idea was that if in fact you built this, it would be possible again to extend the season of the area, to open this up because it has its own separate entrance. And all of this would be available along with the picnic area for extended play. So in your docket, one of the things that I provided was a timetable. These are the dates that we are, we're looking to meet. Although Memorial Day 2022, that actually the date of completion should be 2022, may seem a long ways off. The fact of the matter is, I think we're going to be challenged to be able to, to meet that date. One of the things that we had talked previously to council about and we would like to be able to pursue is accelerating when the earthwork would be done. So we currently have Liberoni under contract for the Rolling Hills Park project. And that project involves extensive grading and site work. And we've worked with Liberoni, they were the site contractors for the Peters Township High School, Rolling Hills Drive Phase One project, the Rolling Hills Drive Phase Two project. And as I said, they're currently the contractor for Rolling Hills Park Phase One. And throughout all these projects, one thing that Liberoni's demonstrating to us is that they're very skilled at what they do and that they're a reputable contractor. So, you know, independent of a final decision to construct the Aquatic Center, Mr. Zomitis and I believe the township's interests are best served by having Liberoni complete the grading work as shown on the grading plan for the Rolling Hills Aquatic Center. And whether the township chooses to move ahead with the Aquatic Center now or later, the site plan currently being developed will likely not substantially change. And completing the bulk excavation now will mitigate the need for extensive grading in the future. The Rolling Hills Park Project Phase One attracted seven bidders. Liberoni's cost for earthwork was lower than all of other bidders and substantially lower than, than five of, of the bidders. If we're going to move ahead with the construction of the Aquatic Center, utilizing Liberoni will eliminate any confusion of coordinating the work on, of two site contractors. Furthermore, advancing the site work now improves the chances of completing the Aquatic Center on time. It's our intention, upon approval from Washington County Conservation District, of the NPDS permit for the Aquatic Center is to present a change order for the earthwork associated with the Aquatic Center development. This will mean that that work will be removed from the bid document currently being developed by Kimbley Grove Grant.
I'm sorry, would you clarify what you just said? So you talked about the NPDS permit and a change order related to that, but what did you just say now that this?
Well, this project is, is independent of the permit that we currently have to do the part.
The Aquatic Center is.
The Aquatic Center is.
Right. So do you know what the change order, or do you have an estimate of the change order for that requirement for Phase One?
We, we, Liberoni's in the process of, of examining what those changes were and costing out what that will be. So we don't know that yet. But that will be coming to you very soon because that work, there's no choice but to go ahead with that work.
Right, I understand.
This, we estimate that the, that, and again, Liberoni has not had a chance to do this in great detail, but basically. detail, but based upon the preliminary grading design for the park, we estimate that the earthwork here, including the paving, is that correct?
The paving of the lower lot.
The paving of this lower lot, yeah, is probably in the vicinity of $500,000. But that work, at some point in time, needs to be done regardless. And the one thing that we know from the master plan is that at some point in the future, whether it's under contract this year or contract sometime in the future, this grading will need to be done. And it doesn't make sense to me to tear up the park twice once it's been done. So, the other thing about it is, you know, some of these areas are areas where there are tennis courts and parking areas that need to come out anyhow as the parks be developed. So, I'm not asking council to make a decision on doing that, but if there are objections to approaching it on this basis, we need to know that so that, in fact, the earthmoving work be placed back into the bid documents.
Could you describe for me, even though you said, you know, well, the master plan, it might eventually be built, just because the capital projects in the master plan until it's approved, it's not finalized? What else could be done there if you graded to match what the Aquatic Center looks like? Are there issues with fencing? I understood there was, you know, some hills and things. What else could be done there if we don't, at some point, do a pool, but we do the grading?
I guess you would have a large, you would have a large flat area that you've created that I guess could be programmed for a number of things, but, you know, the one thing in the master plan that I think everybody agreed upon, even people who aren't necessarily in favor of moving ahead now, is that at some point in time, space would be reserved inside this park to be able to do an aquatics facility. And if you choose, if you choose to locate another activity on this site, I think you will lose the opportunity to ever have a pool inside of Rolling Hills Park.
Would it be easy to use that for just general picnicking, playing?
Oh, you have a large, if you didn't build this, you would have a large flat field that could be programmed for.
Not sports, this is a passive recreation.
But I'm saying, but that's what you would have. You would have a very large flat field.
You could put up a lot of volleyball nets.
But, you know, to give you an idea of this idea of coordinating between these two, what Liberoni owes us right now is a small parking lot here. If you have another earthmoving contractor come in here, Liberoni owes us something over here, somebody else is going to have to do the rest of this, you're literally going to have somebody build half of a parking lot and Liberoni do the other half. It just doesn't make sense.
Is any building that whole thing?
No. No, under the current contract, this is a very small parking lot.
So, this is not the one that we approved the change order on previous?
No, no.
How close is that to the trail extension? I'm sorry, I can't, in my mind, relate.
The trail, well, the trail extension is actually way over here. But along all of these roads, in fact, this is why we ended up, you know what, Gary, you're absolutely right. This is what you looked at before with. It's this one up here. But we added, what we added was this one down here in the designing phase, because this trail ends here, and we wanted to give people a place to park and get their bikes off their cars to start onto the trail. So, this was just one of, they created a terrace, but that parking lot's much smaller than what you see here.
So, you think that continuing with this, the estimate for the cost to continue to grade out in preparation for if it becomes an eventuality is about $500,000?
That's our guess right now, yes. And that's a rough guess that we have derived from our discussions with Liberoni and Mark's looking at what's involved in the project. Is there anything you want to add, Mark?
Just kind of have a little thought, I mean, I think if there is thoughts on moving forward with the Aquatic Center, it makes all the sense in the world to do this work now, along with the parks going up. I think the thing that I want to stress, too, is Paul Hughes, if the Aquatic Center moves forward and we're trying to hit the Memorial Day, 2022 date, that's extremely aggressive. And just in my mind, I think one of the only ways to give ourselves a better chance, I guess, to hit that is to do this earthwork under Liberoni's contract. Because I think, you know, the way that this schedule works out now, if we don't do that, you know, the project, maybe advertise for bids in April, award a bid in May, you know, at the summit, the general contractor will get out there in June to start, you know, do the site prep and move the dirt. Under the Liberoni scenario, he could start moving the dirt potentially in a month tax day, let's say. So, you get a two-month head start on the dirt, which I think would be credible with
Plus, the scope of his services are oriented toward moving the large masses of concrete. A pool contractor, his equipment isn't devoted to that, you know, same efficient movement.
Yes. And again, you know, getting back to what Mark is saying is that if you leave it in the bid document, there're going to have to be an earthmoving contractor in there. And the chances that it's Liberoni, it's not clear. And I just think you're going to have all kinds of coordination issues, because, you know, like, for instance, we have some influence over the order in which Liberoni does this, but if, in fact, somebody else is doing this work in here, he needs this to be completed to be able to do this. And so, I, again, it just seems to make sense to me. But we're going to bring it back to you, but if council feels strongly that doing this through a change order is not what they want to do, we need to know that so that, in fact, the bid document that goes out reflects that.
I think it's fine.
If you're asking whether, in my opinion, if Liberoni, you just want to continue to work with them, I would say it makes logical sense that we would do that. Whether or not we actually approve this additional work, again, I'm not against a pool. I just don't think escalating it to having it done right away is necessarily the right order of priority for things. I can appreciate the argument you made, and I can see where the efficiency of doing it at the same time while all the equipment, heavy equipments there makes sense. So, I'm struggling a little bit with that part of it, but I agree with Liberoni as a, right, the horse you keep, stay on the horse you're riding on, so.
Okay. So, we're going to move ahead on that basis that the earthwork is going to be done by Liberoni for a change order.
Yep.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about was, I just, so that we're all on the same page, you know, the, what we have done in terms of the pricing of this contract is, you know, kind of a common thing where it's a percentage, we're going to agree upon a lump sum based upon a percentage applied to a construction estimate. And as I've explained to council, the construction estimates now that we have are in line with the number that was provided when the master plan was done, but they are certainly in excess of what Kimball Burgegrat thought that they could do this project for, for that matter, the other design consultant brands that are terrible. So, you know, when it became apparent that the number that we're talking about is closer to $10.5 billion, I went back to Kimball Burgegrat and said, well, at that point, we need to get an adjustment on the percentage that we're applying. So, we are going to lower that percentage of seven and a quarter to 7% of the construction value. To me, that is on the low side of what I would expect to normally see. I would normally expect to see something closer to the 8%, but I think it's, in light of their initial proposal and where we are, I think it makes sense, so.
So, you commented about changing, saving about $97,000?
Well, the basis upon which I say that is, they, their estimates for the construction of this project now, and I've expressed to them that I got real concerned with this, their estimates are between 10.2 and 11.4. And, you know, what they have heard loud and clear is, we can't be anywhere near 11.4. I think that becomes a problem for the project. But if, in fact, you ended up at 11.4 and it was seven and a quarter, your savings by reducing this would be that kind of number.
You made reference to a stipulated amount. What does that mean?
Well, because what it is, is that we agree going forward, the billing's going to be based on our project that is estimated to be at $10,500,000, and the percentage we're going to apply to that is 7%.
Okay, so $735,000 working on Burgegrat.
Yes.
At that number.
Yes. And that number is in line with what we presented at the public hearing back in April of 2019. So, you know, I'm comfortable with it from that standpoint.
Well, thanks for negotiating it done.
Oh, I think it's only fair. So.
All right. That won't be the final one, though, from their perspective. Okay.
So, one of the things, the next item on the agenda is to authorize us to pre-qualify general contractors for the Rolling Hills Aquatic Center project. You know, we have done this with other construction projects, and I think it makes a lot of sense. You know, we, prior to pre-qualifying contractors, we have spent a lot of time educating contractors on how to do public jobs, and we were the largest public job that they had undertaken. This allows us to avoid that. The other thing that we're going to do is, as with our other contracts, we are going to issue a single general contract. And the specialty item, pool construction, we are going to stipulate a list of contractors who Council Huntsinger has provided us as being able to do pool construction. And I think the list right now contains nine firms. So, that's how we're going to be able to control that, in fact, the actual construction of the pool itself is done by a qualified contractor, and we're going to use our pre-qualifying of the general contractors, a way to ensure that we get contractors who do jobs of this size, so. So, I need authorization to allow us to pre-qualify contractors.
Move.
Second.
Another discussion, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I'm sorry, I'm voting no. You didn't call for it?
So, what is the vote, just so we get it right in the minutes?
Which what?
What is the vote, just so I get it right in the minutes?
Raise your hands.
One, one aye.
This is just to pre-qualify.
This is to pre-qualify bidders, that's all this is.
Which is a very normal way of doing this, when, you know, it's not our expertise.
When a project's already been approved, I would agree, but this is a.
Okay, I mean, that's fine. Everybody's got their opinion.
Resignation.
Resignation of Robert Shuley from.
I remember we accept the resignation of Robert Shuley from zoning here, board with regrets.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Do you need to fill that slot, or what?
We are in the process of soliciting applications.
Thank you.
Okay, payroll and bills.
Council, we have before us about $690,000 for accounts payable, basically routine business expenses. We're buying more salt, everybody will be happy to know that, and related road maintenance products, fuel, renewal of insurance, insurances, and payment to Liberoni for capital improvement. Payroll is just under $300,000. Move to approve.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, correspondence, there is none. Anybody want to discuss any of the minutes? Okay, miscellaneous.
Yes, there are two items that I want to discuss under miscellaneous. You know, one of the things we were able to do under the CARES Act is to replace our automated external defibrillators in all of our buildings with newer models. We have eight defibrillators that are still usable. They all have, you know, they've been checked out, they have new pads in them. What they may need in the near future is battery replacements. We would like, if council approves, is to be able to donate those to organizations in town that may have a need for a defibrillator. We were going to get people to send us applications, so unless council has a concern about doing that, we were going to go ahead and.
Dear Benny, I don't think there'd be any liability for them not using it, right?
No.
No, I thought about that, too, but no.
As is where.
Right, just get them to sign, really say that they accept it the way it is. That sounds like a nice idea.
All right.
The other thing that I wanted to talk about was, there is a zoning variance that's been applied for, and I'm going to get Ed to help me with this, but our, on Route 19, this is the Antho Building?
It's the Antho Building.
Yeah. On Route 19, we have strived to interconnect parking lots so that people can exit safely at lights. This little building sits here in the middle, and if we, in fact, allowed them to develop this site in accordance with our zoning ordinance, it would block the connection that was provided for. So, if you look here, there are two parking spaces. This is to connect this way, and this was to connect this way. So, what we have suggested they do is to locate the building that they propose in such a way that, this is the building, that this access be provided for.
This could be another bank, Paul?
I have no idea what this is going to be.
So, is it closer to the road?
They don't know the user yet.
Okay.
Chick-fil-A?
So, we, I don't think that's big enough for a Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, I know.
Chick-fil-A would be good, yeah.
You got what, parking spaces?
But.
What's going to happen?
But what we would like, if council. Would agree is that we would like to intervene on behalf of the township in support of this variance, so that, in fact, this possibility of this connection preserved for the future. Now, the one challenge, can you go back up one? Okay. The one challenge we have is that this property owner here is objecting to this interconnection.
Well, wasn't that part of the approval of their plan?
Well, it isn't clear. I got to tell you, this is one that I think the solicitor's going to have to get involved in. But regardless, what we don't want to have happen is that in perpetuity, we'll lose.
On this side.
So, what is the variance? Is it to move the building closer to the road?
Further away, because. And correctly or wrong, under our current zoning ordinance, it would pull this building forward. We want to push the building back.
Because I did the, I did a great easement, reciprocal.
You're asking for a variance to move the building back, our ordinance, what is up here, right?
I'm sorry, when you showed that other picture, I couldn't discern.
So, what they're asking for, Ed, right, is to move the building back so that we can get enough area to get the road to go through, right?
I think that makes sense.
Wonder to me.
Yeah, no.
Although I have to tell you, trying to come out at that next plan, at that light.
that light, it's horrible. It's very, that that parking lot is very narrow, and there's a big, it's always a queue to get out there, no matter where you are, and that people are trying to.
Starbucks.
I mean, I would assume they still, if we did that, they would still have direct access to 19, they can still go like that way if it goes south.
Yeah, because they're they're talking about.
Because nobody in their right mind's going to want to go to that light unless they want to make a left.
Correct.
Go north.
Yeah, but they're they're preserving an access here. This access to the the lower property is going to occur, and you can get out on to 19 there as well. But we just want to make sure that this is preserved for some time in the future. What I need from council is a motion authorizing the planning department to intervene on behalf of the township in support of the variance.
So moved.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So what's the other property owner's beef then?
To use the, the language in our zoning ordinance, at that time, that late cycle was developed was not as strong as it was, when McMurray Shuff to the south developed. So on the plans, even though we preserve the connection to the property to the north of the light is, the language that the owners at that time wanted to attach was possible future connection, so.
That's the argument.
But isn't he attached on the other side?
Yes, yes.
Well, so.
But but it'd be good to be able to make it.
No, 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 I'm saying, so he's already attached, so he should expect to be attached on the other end.
Good.
Getting commercial property owners to cooperate with one another is not easy.
We have to make sure we have that in the agreement.
They're all still fighting down at the other ones.
They are?
Yep.
Anything else, Paul?
No.
Anybody on miscellaneous?
I have a few things, Mr. Chairman. The calendar on the docket shows that there are some in-person and some Zoom meetings for the boards on the one month, but not on the next month. What is our expectation of attendance now that we're kind of getting out of the quarantine phase?
Well, what we have done with the boards is we've allowed each of them to set their own rules with regard to how they feel comfortable meeting. Some boards have been meeting in person, some people, some boards have been meeting virtually, and and I I still think that the best course of action is to allow the boards to decide which way they can meet and and do it effectively.
I I think, Paul, we need to set a date sometime where we're going to be back to.
And and if you want to do that, I think council has the authority to do that.
Well, I think it's probably more important for some boards and committees, commissions, than others to meet in person than than, you know, for example, EQB, I have no issue with, you know, library can be Zoomed, but my concerns are planning and zoning. I know Park and Rec is meeting in person because they use the big.
Yes.
So, I mean, I I agree with Mr. Boe. I'd like to kind of make a point where there's an expectation that people show up.
And I don't have a problem with it. The one that that does have me concerned is the, and we don't have it scheduled yet, but the potential public hearing on the development across from the old high school. I don't know how you're going to do that one in person. I think you're going to have so many people here that that may be a challenge.
Well, I mean, it's possible then to move it someplace else where you can spread people out.
Okay.
Yeah, that.
I mean, I just, I'm concerned that, you know, that we're, we're meeting in person, other boards are meeting in person, but where you get to the point where you actually need public input, you know, people need to be able to express their opinions, you need to be able to show people what you're doing. I mean, it's got to happen, and I think that, you know, to say, okay, do it when you're comfortable, I mean, we could be talking about this a year from now.
Well, we don't have to make that decision, though.
We don't have to make it now.
Let it go the way it is, and if it keeps on and we get to the point where we feel that it's no longer, it should be an option, then we'll just take it up there.
I think we need to express to them, though, that we're we're looking for a date.
Okay.
You know, part of this is precipitated by my question when I asked about attendance at the planning commission and was told, you know, it's better to have fewer people, you know, as long as they're there. The problem was that it wasn't clear to the manager who was attending and who wasn't at the time. I just feel that council needs to understand what people would like to do, but I agree with Mr. Boe, they need to be moving towards meeting in person.
Yeah, but in defense of the planning commission, I mean, what they did was, and you've seen it, we haven't had a significant plan come through, and so, you know, from their perspective, we don't need to bring everybody out if what we're talking about is some division of.
But we're starting to see the need for it. I think that just we need to express to them that, look, there's got to be a point, and you guys need to be working toward.
Okay, and we can do that. That's reasonable.
Yeah, let's put a, put an end light to it somehow.
That's reasonable.
Okay, the, will you be able to give us an update on the RFPs for the firehouse? I mean, you don't have to talk about it now, but at some point in the future.
Oh, I I think we will. I, what I can tell you now is that we're overwhelmed with the number of responses that we've got, yes. I mean, how many responses?
16.
16 responses.
We need to pre-qualify that, huh?
No, this is for the design.
Oh, just for the design.
Design, yeah.
Or a mortuary.
Oh, no, the mortuary.
Do you have better options?
Yes.
At some point, I had asked a question part of the meeting because I got an inquiry about the minimum maintenance roads, and you were kind enough to send a kind of a summary of the workshop. Thank you for being more eloquent than than my drafted summary. But I think that there's parts of the whole conversation that need to be finalized. So under, this may not be under miscellaneous, maybe this is a better topic for a future meeting.
Okay.
And the last thing, could we remind people with all these wonderful walkable communities that we're creating, there is an ordinance that says, clear your sidewalk. Particularly, it's going to snow again tonight, apparently. I live in a plan, it's hit or miss, but that applies to the residents as well as the HOAs who are responsible for the common areas. So, you know, if you all out there would please remember that you're responsible to clear your sidewalks. There are still people walking around, even in cold weather.
Okay, anything else?
Mr. Boe, I have something that'll take 30 seconds as an executive session item.
Okay, okay. All right, and in that, we are adjourned.